Good evening, Mayor. I'm Gloria Mays. I'm the executive director and founder of Elijah Ministries. And I drove down to share with you that our agency will be expanding to Bastrop, Louisiana. We provide supportive housing and support services for those who are in need of housing and for special populations, the chronically homeless, mentally ill. I've provided to you a brochure of our agency and also a pamphlet of our upcoming event that we'll be having on October 24th. We will be expecting and encouraging partnerships here with the city of Bastrop and the surrounding communities to assist us in providing housing for special populations, the chronically homeless, mentally ill, and those who are low in income. We have requested federal as well as state funding also to provide additional assistance to low-income families for housing, utility, and other emergency community support. We extend our hand to you in order to be able to assist this population and hope that we will have future interactions in order to be able to meet our goals. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And now I will entertain questions if you have any.
Okay, so supportive housing for Northeast Louisiana? What does that entail?
We provide chronically housing for chronically homeless, mentally ill. They're permanent housing. All our funding comes from the U.S. Housing and Urban Development. We've been in business 11 years. We have a jurisdiction from Jackson Parish all the way to the Mississippi River. We decided to choose Bastrop, Louisiana because of its economic position and the needs in the community for those who are in need of mental health services and low-income families.
Ms. May, if someone, as you just described, needed your assistance, who would they contact?
We will be establishing an office here in Bastrop, Louisiana. They can call our office. It's a 24/7 number. You can call at any time. We don't provide crisis housing. We've also met with the police jury here in Bastrop, the Morehouse General Hospital. We met with the administrator, the board, also case managers. And also, you will be able to refer persons even if they don't meet the criteria. We are part of a continuum of care which is located in Monroe, and then we will be able to make adequate referrals, not just for chronically homeless and low income, but youth will be included in that as well as some services in need for the elderly. We've also met with the sheriff department and the police department, and also we are connected with the social services agencies. What we will do, once we establish an office, we will have then what we call a town hall meeting, where we will put in a newspaper, announce it to everyone, and the community will have an opportunity to come out, get more information. And then from there, we'll have community educations and fairs so they can gain more information about what we do and how we can assist in the community.
Ms. Mays, how do you take care of these individuals that qualify for your homes? You know, if they're mentally impaired or, you know, have to have some kind of help to make sure that they, you know, are safe and not living by themselves, et cetera?
Yeah, and I certainly understand that. It's the public's impression that persons who are affected by a mental illness need someone with them at 24/7, and we found and we've proven that, that it's not necessary. We do provide case management services eight hours of the day. We teach them independent living skills, social skills. We teach them medication management, and also we connect them with services in the community. I'm also an advanced practice registered nurse. My specialty is in psychiatric mental health. I'm a psychiatric nurse practitioner. So I myself will establish an office in Bastrop as well, and will be able to coordinate my services with the two physicians that I work with in Monroe.
Another question. What about, would you use existing housing or would this be new housing that you're proposing?
We establish relationship with landlords. We try to do surveys in the community to see what is available. We will also provide rent remediation for those who may need that assistance. They don't have the wherewithal. And we will also, we won't in the next three to five years be establishing any new building. If we do, it would probably be renovating rehabilitation.
These patients that need medication, what type of service could you have for them?
Well, we don't call them patients. We call them residents because our objective is to provide the housing. Once they become housed as a client of ours, then we provide medication assistance. We make sure that they get wraparound services. All of them will get an appointment either with a psychiatrist or local mental health. We don't want to take them out of their communities. If the resources are in the community, we want to get them for them. Also, we have a nurse. We provide pill planning setup. We only give them week supply so that they will not be in a danger of harming themselves. And I'm proud to say in 11 years, we've not had anyone that tried to commit suicide. All of our clients now live in independent, congregate, or they live in duplexes. And last year, we provided services for 19, and we provided services for over 66 people. And so, meaning that they are permanent. They don't ever have to leave. We're not a short-term shelter. We don't do transitional services. If they come to us, we want to teach them the skills that they can and be able to live independently, and they have a level of goal attainment. Also, we understand that many of them don't have benefits. Our agency is certified. We can obtain food stamps as well as social security benefits. I'm proud to say all of our clients have those services at this time with our agency.
What is your number? How many clients do you all have?
Well, we are funded for 14 clients. A person who is affected by a mental illness considered to be a total full-time equivalent. That full-time equivalent, the federal government expects a cost between $10,000 to $12,000 a year. When you multiply that based on the services as well as the supportive services, we have a budget of over $207,000 a year that we provide. All of those services won't be provided in Bastrop, Louisiana. The main goal at this time for the next three to six months is to provide referral, emergency assistance, and education. And if the person is in need of the services, we definitely want to get them for them. But we don't do it along ourselves. We have to be embraced by the community, and we establish community partners. As we are in Ruston, we're doing the same thing here in Bastrop. We come every week. We pray through the city. We are a faith-based agency. We come and we also establish relationships with partners in the community. I spoke with the sheriff as well as the police department. I came in December. We did a, what you call a point-in-time survey to identify needs of persons who are homeless in rural communities. And we know that many people are not living out in the streets. But I can say, I was just here on Tuesday, stopped at the gas station, and there was a gentleman lying right there on the ground, suffering from a mental illness. And so, they are in your community, and they are in need of the assistance.
Did I understand you say you're faith-based?
We are faith-based.
And how do you connect with the churches and the pastors in order to...
We will be having meetings with churches and pastors. We've already sent out letters, and we will be going. And when we have our community meetings, we will be writing letters and encouraging pastors to participate. What we do currently in Ruston, our churches assist us in maintaining a pantry where individuals can come and receive food, clothing, or emergency assistance free of charge. Also, churches also can assist in providing referrals. They may know someone in their church or in their community who may be in need of the services. We can't do them alone, but we will be doing outreach as well. And we are certified through the federal faith-based agency.
So let me ask another question, Ms. Mays. So what are you asking for, from us?
We are extending our hand. Anytime we come into a city, we want to be welcome to the city. We want the, all of the authorities and governing positions to know that we are in your city and that we will be doing business in your city. A lot of our federal paperwork in the future has to be signed off by the mayor. And if we establish a home and put clients in it, we'll have to do environmental surveys. Your planning and zoning committee will be assisting us with that. And also, if we're, based on where the location is, your police jury will participate in that assessment and certify that we are actually operating and doing business, and it is according to standards. That is why it's very essential for the city as well as the parish to be involved. And what we find, it is a dynamic working relationship where we all work together to help this population.
Okay, so you'll be getting back with it?
Of course. In the future, once we have established here, we will be coming requesting funding and donation. And so, it is not something that we are asking you for now. We're currently in our funding campaign. We will raise the money. We've successfully done it the last 11 years. These are competitive grants that have matched as well as leverage. Our grant is due on Monday. It's already completed, and we do expect to expand. It's only a matter of time.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Okay. It's that time of year to, I guess, appoint a member to the Bastrop Historical District Commission. And I may mess up the last name. It's Susan Plong, Plong?
Susan Arnett Plong, yeah.
Plong was a member, and she agreed to continue serving, so I'd like to reappoint Ms. Plong.
I make that motion, Mayor?
Second.
We got a motion in a second in this session? All for...
Aye.
Yes? Motion passes. Mr. Patel, you would like to speak to the council about zoning.
Good evening.
I own and operate this best western at 2130 Madison. I have a big lot behind my hotel, and I have manufactured home back there. And I'm requesting you to remap the backside to residential zone back there so I can use that. I have no plan for any commercial build or anything back there because there's completely 100% frontage has been used for a hotel, and I have no intention of building anything back there. So I'm requesting you to find any solution when I have a house back there.
You did, you've been to the zoning commission?
Yes, I have been to...
And what was the ruling?
They say we cannot remap that.
Question, Mayor. Mr. Patel, did the fire marshal approve that structure you have back there?
No, I didn't go to the state fire marshal. They say that commercial occupancy, they cannot use that building for that commercial use of it. That's why I had to find this residential part of it.
What is the building going to be used for?
That's for my residence now.
Your resident?
Yeah.
Can I ask, Doug, let me ask you a question. Should it have been a permit issued for that house to be moved in the first place?
I would think so. It seems to me that several years ago, or at least before previous council, I think this same question came up, and I believe that this body said no. I may be wrong, but I think this is the same location, and essentially, we're talking about the same property. And so, that makes it even more, to your point, that there should have been some type of authorization in the form of a permit or something given before it was even put there.
Were you giving a permit to put that building there?
I don't know the manufacturer took it or not. I really didn't know.
Mr. Walters?
Mr. Walters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Mitchell. And it's zoning amendment.
Good evening, how everyone doing? My name is Michael Mitchell, the owner of Mike's Automotive on 419 West Cycles. I'm asking the board for zoning requests as a business for sale used cars. Right now, at the time I established automotive business there, shop there, that I had been in business over a year now, about a year and a half now, doing automotive repairs. I just want to expand my business a little bit, sell a few cars. Do not want to flood the lot, just want to sell two or three cars at a time. Sell those and fix them and sell them.
And recommendation from zoning board? What did they say?
They denied it of, that it was not within the map of that. But my business seek in the area of other business as what called grandfather in. There's three other businesses that's in my area that is across from me, beside me, and all, even though they are grandfather in, but they still in the area of, my business still in a commercial area with other business is conducting the same business that I'm conducting.
Mr. Mitchell, do you know how long that business before you started, how long they were out of business? When they went out, prior to you taking, purchasing the business?
Right. Couldn't have been about a year, wasn't even a year.
What, you have a business there, what type?
I have automotive repair business there. Been permitted, got my occupational license and all for the automotive repair shop.
It's no problem with the business you have there?
Correct.
The problem is, what is the only, what's the problem was?
The problem was, is more as adding another business to the business, basically. Which affiliated with cars anyway. I mean, that's what I do. I work on cars. Cars in front of me out there, I work on them. I keep a clean environment, no cars, just throwing around my shop, piled around it.
And the area is zoned for?
What it's zoned for now?
Yes.
Residential right now. I'm right there. I think it's XR2, I believe that's what it is.
But the zoning commission granted you, or permit to, for auto mechanic shop?
Yes, automotive repair shop. Back when I applied for my occupational license back in March of 2013.
Okay. Do you have your dealership license?
No, I do not have my dealership license.
Why?
Because I'm not in a zoning area.
But can you still sell, sell a car there if you wanted to?
And that's the issue and the problem that I'm having now, that I would like to get rezoned.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell, you're actually requesting to be rezoned? Okay.
Yes, I am.
Be remapped?
Be remapped.
Remapped, yeah, remapped.
Wouldn't you need to go before the zoning commission board first to get that request?
Yes, but this body has the ultimate authority on remaps, but the answer is yes. Sounds to me like you have multiplicity of issues where this gentleman is pointing out that other businesses that sell cars apparently were grandfathered. They've been there doing it longer than before the law even came into place regarding zoning. And he is, he has a business, but the problem is, he wants to do something that's different from what he's actually doing now, even though it's related. It's different enough to where it would require a remap because it's an inconsistent use otherwise. He's saying, well, the folks across the street are doing that inconsistent use, but they were grandfathered. They beat the clock. And so, there's nothing you can do about that except for a remap.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell, thank you for coming by. Andre Brandy. And request for map zone amendment.
Good evening. I'm Andre Brandy. I'm acquiring a business of a used tire shop. I'm a person from the previous owner, which is named Mr. Roosevelt Williams. And I'm asking for request for a zoning, remapping. And the reason of my, I was denied the occupational license because of that business now was grandfathered in. And it's been there over 20-some years, give or take, from Mr. Williams. And he decided to retire out, but he let his occupation license expire maybe over a year or whatever the time limit was. So I got with Mr. Vereen, and we, I got denied from the zoning commission because of the grandfather act. But the business have already been established. It's already, have already been there. And the only other thing that I'm adding to it, I'm doing besides the used tire, will be selling fishing tackle, which is in the, located right in the same building. So one side will be used tires, repair, repair, and the sale of used tires. And I will also be dealing with fishing tackle, which is, you know, just your basic crickets, worms, hooks, fishing gear. And I'm asking the council to grant me the authority to be rezoned or rezoned on the map as for Mr. Vereen showed me. But as far as the zoning commission, I was denied because of the grandfather act. And he, I don't know what the reason of him not renewing his occupational license, but from what we talked about, it was a retirement issue. So everything else, when I asked him about his business, we worked out a plan, a little deal with, we got between me and him, and everything in the shop now, he's letting me use. I mean, actually, I walked into the shop with nothing. So everything's, I've been acquiring tires and things as far as inventory and stocking, and until I learned about, I had to get remapped and rezoned. So as far as the fishing tackle deal, I haven't done anything until I get to, hopefully get the approval to be rezoned.
Do you have an occupational license?
No, sir.
Okay, well. And the area you're in is zoned for?
Residential.
He say it's been there 20 years?
According to Mr. Williams, he said about that estimated time, give or take. It's been a while. I don't know if he's been there as long as Hester's Jiffy Pack. I don't, I don't know. But my understanding, Hester Jiffy Pack is also grandfathered in. So it's just, you can call it a corner lot, but it's so many feet from the intersection of Elm and Collison Road. But I don't know to have the exact footage, but we are right across the road from each other as far as the location. Yes, sir.
You're not going to be able to, you, first, you're going to have to get a license, occupational license, is that correct?
Yes, I can't get an occupational license until I get zoned. The zoning, but it's why the zoning, they're saying since his occupational license expired. So from my understanding, the way they're explaining to me, that that business don't exist because of the grandfather. So it's named as a resident. As of since his occupation license expired, it is now legally on the books a resident because of the grandfather, I don't, because of the grandfather clause that was added in.
If I understand this right, it sounds like a cessation of use issue where you had what would be a non-conforming business or non-conforming activity. It stopped. It didn't continue. And after a period of time, you no longer get the right to come back and revive it and resume that non-conforming use because of cessation of use. There's a, I don't have it in front of me, but our ordinance talks about that where a business is in operation, it's non-conforming. Let's say, let's use a simple example. Let's say it's a liquor store next to a school, which normally is prohibited. But let's say that the liquor store got there before the school got there. Liquor store shuts down, stays out of business for a while. Somebody else comes along, wants to purchase it, can't operate it as a liquor store anymore because of the cessation of use. Now, that's, that's just an example to illustrate what, what it sounds like. The issue is, I don't know the background, but that's what it sounds like to me.
I have a question, Mr. Lawrence. When Mr. Williams closed his shop down, if Mr. Mitchell had have came in immediately, could that business continued?
If it was, if it is, as I'm seeing, a cessation of use issue, normally, the law will say something like, if you resume the use within six months, you know, or something like that, the answer would be yes. I don't know that that's what, I don't know that that's exactly what this is about, though, but I'm saying that's what it sounds like. And the answer to your question would be yes, if that's what it was about, and it was timely done. But when you wait too long, the answer is no.
Do you know when the last time Mr. Williams had license?
Is, I don't know if I spoke to the disposal type of information, but...
I heard. Okay. You don't have to say it, but in other words, the business, it wasn't a business. Okay.
All right. Well, that, now, that makes it, that answers the question.
Right.
Because, you know, you can't be grandfathered as a, as a legal non-conforming use if you're not legal in the first place. That's just the best way to say it. So I'm not, and I'm not saying anybody was illegal, I'm just making an observation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brandy. Anybody had, anything else? Resolution 141583, a resolution authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. State project number H dot 010769 for the rehabilitation rotating beacon support structure at the Morehouse Memorial Airport. Brent Elton.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
The State Department of Transportation has decided to give us some money to basically repaint the beacon pole structure. The paint on it's starting to fade and get a little bit old. It's a little less visible to aircraft. And it's probably hard to imagine an aircraft crashing into a beacon pole because the paint was bad, since it's got that big light on top of it. But that's the way the standards are, and they're offering to give us a grant of $9,000 to have that beacon pole repainted and essentially refinished, and it'll... And it'll, it'll help protect the structure as well. It's not just strictly for aesthetics. And it, uh, also makes it highly visible to any aircraft operating during the daytime when the beacon light would be off. And so, if y'all accept this grant, we'll, uh, get that beacon pole repainted.
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All for?
Uh-uh.
Against? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution fourteen fifteen eighty-five, a resolution by the City of Barris of Louisiana expresses the support of constitutional amendment three, Act eight seventy-one of the twenty-fourteen regular session of the Louisiana Legislature, and constitutional amendment ten, Act four thirty-sixth of the regular session of the Louisiana Legislature, constitutional amendment to assist municipalities in the fight against blighted property. Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, the, um, LMA has heard our complaints over the years of what to do with blighted property and the process, shorten it, just really a cleanup. There's not a lot of grant money available, but it is a problem that is probably known nationwide, most definitely in the state of Louisiana. So, they have, um, asked us to support this amendment, and it will make the, uh, process of hopefully getting rid of the blighted, especially if it is adjudicated. I think their goal was eighteen months, wasn't that what it was? I think it was eighteen months rather than the three years. And it's probably just vacant lots rather than structures. So, um, they really asked for your support and the fight into changing that law.
Mayor, there's a quick footnote on this. Uh, in accomplishing a part of what Ms. Goldman just mentioned, uh, many municipalities were using third parties, contractors, to help facilitate this. And there was a, uh, state Supreme Court ruling that prohibited third parties from doing this. Basically, it said that the local tax collector could only engage in the activity of having tax sales and doing other things to, to accomplish this. So, uh, this is a request for supporting a constitutional amendment to ultimately accomplish what Ms. Goldman is mentioning by allowing, among other things, us to go back to a system where you engage and contract with folks who are professionals at, you know, targeting blighted housing and doing it in a cost-effective way and exercising the, uh, task that normally the tax collector would in, in holding tax sales and whatnot.
This is a resolution that showing the City of Barris is in suppo, is in support of amendment three and amendment ten, which will be on the November election. You heard the resolution?
I'll show move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All for?
Uh-uh.
Against? Motion passes. Resolution fourteen fifteen eighty-six, a resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative ende, endeavor agreement and any amendment thereof with the State of Louisiana Office of Facility Planning and Control of the Division of Administration in connection with the F P and C project number fifty dash M nineteen dash thirteen dash zero. Barris of City Hall, roof construction and green light planning and construction. Sandra?
Uh, Mayor, this is a grant that we actually started applying to, I think it was in two thousand eight. Every year we apply, every year we conduct the priority list. Uh, surprisingly, they sent us a letter last week and said, you've got part of the money. So, we would like for y'all to consider accepting it. I think it's a little over twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, we're gonna see how, how much we can do with the twenty-six. Uh, it is time for us to apply again for the same money. It's due by November first. So, we're hoping to apply again some additional money to go along with this and even some more projects. Hopefully, we'll be able to get the rest to re-roof our city hall, which is in very much need. And the light fixtures, all but in this room, are the original light fixtures that we have with the building. And the, they're not as bright as these in here, and we would like to upgrade our lighting So, we would like y'all entertain, um, adopting this resolution.
I make that motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Let's go. How long would it be once we get to okay that we can have them? How long would it be before we get there?
Not real sure. We've got the planning to do. And so, um, they're gonna call sometime this month and set up a meeting with the mayor in Denman, and they will walk us through the process. So, we're gonna follow their lead in telling us what we need to do, when we need to do it, and how we need to do it. And so, we're, I don't know if the twenty-six thousand will cover the whole planning or not, the plans. We'll, we'll just have to see what, what, but they're gonna give us twenty-six thousand dollars. And we'll have to do some match money, I'm sure, but, um, we're gonna ask and beg for some more money, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get it.
Yeah, we've been in this business since, I guess, seventy-six. And the only roof work we've done on it was actually in the police department.
It does need it.
What is your pleasure?
I'm moved that we accepted.
Uh, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All for?
Uh-uh.
Against? Resolution fourteen fifteen eighty-seven, a resolution authorizes the mayor of the City of Barris to request funding from the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for improvements to the Moe House Memorial Airport for the year twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen. Stellia?
Good evening again. Uh, basically, what this is, is where we send to the state, um, an updated capital improvement plan. And every year, we'll update our plans and we'll send it in. And, uh, that's basically what we're doing, is telling what we would like to spend our money on over the next five years. And, um, we actually missed out last year on some work that we've moved over to this year, but we're actually adding more to it. And that's gonna put us in a better position to do even more work in the next few years. So, uh, basically, in two thousand fifteen, we'll do the earthwork, design, environmental and construction, and we'll do the design and environmental on a runway overlay that we will probably be needing in about three years when we'll actually do the construction. And then after that, in two thousand eighteen, we'll have, uh, we got teehangers, and then in two thousand nineteen, uh, apron rehabilitation, which is the ramp area next to the terminal. And this is all very fluid, except for the very next year, this is all subject to change as our needs change throughout the years.
Thank you. And will be your pla, your pleasure?
I make that motion, Mayor?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All for?
Uh-uh.
Against? Motion passes.
Thank you again.
Ordinance fourteen forty-two twenty-eight, an ordinance to amend supplemental, redesign, designate, and restate the existing provisions of the Code of Ordinances number six through dash one through six dash nineteen, and to provide for and maintain building codes permitting requirements and the enforcement thereof of the City of Barris of Louisiana, and to provide otherwise as may be required with respect thereof. Doug and Mr. Walters.
Mayor, I received a, I received a package from City Hall indicating that the city desired to, uh, do a wholesale, uh, update of its current, um, building codes, and that you literally wanted to go in and replace and supplant the entire code that you had with this new code. And so, what we did was, we identified the location of your, your present code, which is, uh, in section six dash one through six dash nineteen of the city's Code of Ordinances. We went in and through this ordinance, we will be, if it's adopted, we will be supplanting six dash one through six dash nineteen with these items, which we've labeled, if you notice, six dash one through six dash nineteen. There is one exception. Your current six dash two is sort of a job description of what the building code person does. We felt it was important to preserve that, so we're gonna redesignate that, and you'll see, you'll see on page sixteen where we say, be it further ordained, that the current text of six dash two shall be redesignated as section six dash two point one. So, the net effect is, you will be changing the entire building code with the suggested code, unless there's some changes, and preserving the current six dash two by redesignating it as six dash two point one. Now, I didn't have any discussions with anyone about this. I got the package from City Hall, and we just went to work identifying the area where the place is. And I think, is this for introduction, Ms. Goldman? So, obviously, you know, this is a point where, where the city is open for input about what you want the final product to look like, or if something needs to change.
Okay.
All I have is, if you had any questions, of course, if, uh, the city had adopted, uh, the LMA recommended, um, ordinance when the state adopted the uniform construction codes. And when you adopted those, it had listed by code reference, the year reference number of the building codes that were enforced throughout the state. And that was adopted that year. If somebody were to come look at your ordinance now, right now, they would assume that you were still under the two thousand six international codes that the state adopted when they initially adopted the uniform construction codes. But every three years, the state upgrades to a newer version of the code and adopts that as the state code. And what, so thereby, you would have to, every three years, come back and amend your ordinance to include the state codes. But the, the language of this allows you to adopt whatever the current code is from the state, so it keep you, have to continue to come back. One of the things they didn't do initially, because it was a, a new thing that came in, uh, and they didn't want to delegate to jurisdictions administrative sections of their code, they didn't adopt any real administrative sections. And, and this, uh, gives you some more administration of permitting and other things that are not really in your code, as well as some penalties that, for not obtaining building permits that were, that are better defined and really something to give a little teeth to be able to enforce by penalties, uh, for non-compliance. And that's why, I mean, we do this to a lot of our jurisdictions that we're building official, contracted as your building official for, just to give you an updated administrative code to, to look at and adopt. And of course, certainly any changes you want to make to this, this will be a time for you of the introduction of this to go through and look at and see if you want to add to or take away any of the language of, of this suggested ordinance. Uh, this isn't your building codes that you follow, this is the ordinance that administers the building codes. And the building codes are all uniform throughout the state for every jurisdiction, so, but this helps you to be able to have a better defined administrative part to what the city requires for, for its permits and rights of entry and, and things like that, that are necessary parts of administrative parts of building codes. So, if you have any question or, or anytime y'all wanna, if you look through and you see something, uh, of course, this is introduction, if you see something that would, that you won't change before adoption, certainly, you know, let me know, and I'll come meet with any of you, and we'll discuss those, make recommendations for you.
And this is only introduction, there is no vote. It's just a layover for the next thirty days and go through it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion, removal of garbage receptacles from the road after pickup. Mr. Lawrence?
Mayor, I got a request to look into developing an ordinance to address this issue because I think, uh, some have indicated that it's a problem with those containers remaining out. And what I needed really was some feedback from this body about exactly what you wanted it to look like, because there's so much leeway in how you can attack this. Uh, you know, the city can, can criminalize this. Maximum fine, the maximum penalty on the city charter is five hundred dollars and six months in jail. But I'm sure that's not where we want to go. You look at some municipalities, they say things like, uh, you can put your, uh, container out by six AM, you gotta have it back in before seven PM on the day of garbage pickup, and each day it stays out there, beyond that is twenty-five dollars, or it's fifty dollars. Or on third, on second offense, the fine is double. You know, it's not twenty-five dollars, it's, you know, more. So, I'm, I'm just trying to, I guess, get some feel for how, 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 where you want to go in terms of penalizing folks. How bad is the problem? When do you want folks to be able to put their cans out? When do you expect them to take them back in? You know, if you got, we gotta be clear, if we're gonna put a penalty on folks, we gotta be clear about when, how long they got to put their cans out, or their containers out, and when they gotta bring them back in.
We currently have, um, we currently have a ordinance on that.
You know, I was trying to remember that, and that's one that escapes my mind.
There is an ordinance on that.
Cause I, you know...
It has to be, your garbage has to be put out on the street, on the curbside, uh, by six o'clock the evening, oh, before your garbage is, uh, taken, and taken in by six o'clock the day after, the day it has been taken in. And, uh, I think the problem comes in now, you'll find a lot of wire baskets and...
Right.
Like, I know, well, there's a blue trash can where our state has been out there for the last six months, you know? And that's the problem.
Who handling our, uh, our waste? Is it waste management, or is it the police jury?
Police jury.
Well, you know, lately, uh, for the last couple of months, the vehicle's been, you know, breaking down. And I know often the trash stayed out there for a whole week.
And that, and that's the kind of issue, you know, right, you, you just, you just brought up a very legitimate point. And so, if I put my trash out, but it stays out there for a week because the truck didn't come by, you know...
I think the last part was, it has to be in by six o'clock of the day that it is picked up.
Yeah, but...
It didn't say it couldn't sit out there a week. It said it has to be in by six o'clock the day.
They've been inconsistent by picking up. If they running late, they might be a day behind when they supposed been picked over here Thursday. They picking over, over here probably Friday or Monday.
Well, I remember my office was about two blocks down the street here, that's exactly what used to happen. I mean, it was hit and miss.
And it's still happening, Mr. Lawrence. That's why it's kind of difficult to decide, put a pinpoint deadline, what we gotta do.
No, the deadline was by six o'clock of the day it is picked up.
Yeah, but you don't want to pull it back in, then, then they come the next day.
No, 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 listen what I'm saying.
But he's saying if they never pick it up.
Oh, okay.
Never they pick it up.
The day it is picked up, if it's picked up today, then you take it in this afternoon. If they don't pick it up today, it stays until they pick it up. But some, like I said, there's one on my street that's been there, I know, for three months, just sitting there. And he go out and drop it, trash it, and leave it there, and it's sitting right on the curb. If somebody run over it, like I said, it's sitting on, it's not on his side, it's on the city's side. And lately, if you drive down some streets, you gonna find wire baskets, sitting out on the streets, that people just drop by and dry the trash in. And those wire baskets, you'll want, find the wind out that, uh, you'll see where the trash is being blown out of it, and it's all over the neighborhood. And wire baskets have never been permitted.
So, is that, is this an enforcement? So is that, is this an enforcement on the, like the mayor's saying, these wire baskets probably the biggest part of this problem? Is, is we just not enforcing that?
Possibly. I mean, that possibly sounds like the issue. I, I would want to make sure that there's not some issue where the way we describe a container excludes wire baskets. I would figure that it ought to include it. But, you know, on that sort of thing, that's something that we need to look at. I mean, coming in, it was not crystal clear to me exactly about, about what kind of a problem or issue that we had. Was it just folks not, you know, we're not, we didn't have any teeth in the law, or it wasn't comprehensive enough? So it's a matter of me getting some feedback from you about what exactly it is that, that we need to address on this.
Mr. Lawrence, you have some people that work. They put their containers out, they go to work. Some work out of, out of the city. And the way they can get their container back in in the time, they say, if they work, for instance, a 12-hour shift at the chicken farms or somewhere like that. When they get home, that's when they can get their containers in. Yeah, that's no problem. That's still a day off. They go in, take it in. If they leave at 12:00 in the morning, they're not gonna come in tonight.
It might be after 6:00.
You throw in your trash can tomorrow, it's not gonna be sitting there, right?
I think that's.
You go in your house, and you can hang a long hour. You get in the next day.
Is it? Yeah, and that, Ms. Goldman was, was saying that perhaps there's no penalty. In other words, maybe we got a, a rule, but no penalty. Now, you know, that, that becomes the, the, the part of this that, that we really gotta get into. I mean, I can develop something, but I want to know, you know, are y'all looking to want to be real punitive with folks, or just to, you want it to be progressive, you know, a little bit now, a lot later for the second offense? How do you want to do it? Or by the day? You know, what are we looking at if we deal with the penalty?
How bad is the situation, though?
Um, that's.
If you get just one every now and then, you know, it's, it's a difference. If it's just, just consistent, where you just walk down neighborhood or drive down the street, there's about 10 or 15, 20 of them just staying out there now, that, that is a problem. Now, but if it's just one every other side of town, you run into one every now and then, you gonna have that anyway, probably. You gonna be laying in the ditch or somewhere else, anyway.
The biggest thing, I'm, I'm with Roy on this. The biggest issue I, I see is that, that we got some people that put it out that's not containerized. It's just laying out there for a week, potentially a week, sometime more than that, because they might, you know, but that's, that's one issue. The other one is, is having these wire containers that supposedly keeps the varmints out, which really probably doesn't, but, but the wind can blow that and scatter it. Plus, it blocks walkways. You know, a lot of times, you get sidewalks, and they wind up in the sidewalk. So that, to me, is the, is an issue, not necessarily the individual containers that do get picked up, you know? But that's just my feedback.
I, I tell you what. Let me, Mayor, let me talk to you, and perhaps I can talk to, to each one of you, or get a way to learn each of your individual concerns, and then we can develop something from that. Because coming in today, I wasn't sure about exactly. And now, and now I understand, it's multiple stuff. And so we can do something to develop, to address the multiple questions you have.
Okay. Discussion Action Permission to Advertise for Bids for Hay Cutting at the Industrial Park, Mohawes Memorial Airport, and Mohawes Memorial Airport.
Mayor and Council, we had bidded this out, I think, last year. And the individual that bid, got the bid, ended up having to, he had some problems. Anyway, he couldn't cut it. And if we cut it, we may have to buy a piece of equipment to even cut it. It's, it's large areas. If we use an existing mower, it may take weeks to mow all of it. So what, reason why we bid it out is to keep us from having to mow it and keep us from having to buy a big sidewinder or whatever. So we're asking you to give us permission to re-advertise, and hopefully we'll get somebody that will be dependable. They have to have required insurance, everything goes with it. And it would keep us from mowing it, and it gives us just a little revenue. We don't make much off of it, but it keep, mainly it just keeps it mowed, and it keeps us from having to mow it. I'm, I'm told even this year, it was kind of dry, and everybody had hay. You know, we, we tried to get somebody just to come in there and provide us with insurance and just cut it one time, and we've not been very successful in doing that. But we do need to do something, either cut it ourselves or bid it out. But we just thought that we could try bidding out again. Hopefully, we'll get somebody next time that will be here, be able to cut it, have the equipment to cut it. And, and if y'all don't mind giving us permission to advertise, next month, we'll get the bids in and look to see how they come.
Ms. Sandra, can we put on there to have cut by a certain time?
It is in there. It's, it is, it specifies inches. It has to be cut once it reaches so high. Well, I don't remember the, in the contract, but it does specify that already. Once it grows so high, it has to be cut.
So is there any need to cut it right now, is what we're saying?
It is need to cut.
Yeah, it's about, it's between five and six feet.
Right.
Yes, so that, that's in the contract that they'll sign.
And can we get permission to advertise?
I make the suggestion that we give Ms. Goldman permission to advertise for the cutting.
We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All for?
Uh-uh.
Against? Motion passes. Lica license, chief?
Yes, Mayor and Alderman, I'd like to recommend the following establishments renew their lica license for the year 2015. Easy Mart, number 203, located 1231 North Washington Street, Class A. I mean, it's retail dealer off premises only. Rite Aid, number 7338, 727 North Washington, it's a retail dealer off premises only. Specialty Daiquiri and Spirits, 1923 North Washington Street, retail dealer on premises. Stop For You Incorporated, 1920 West Madison, retail dealer off premises only. Walgreens, number 10536, 1930 East Madison, a retail dealer off premises only. Walmart, number 98, 6091 Maruz Road, retail dealer off premises only. And Sissy's U-Packet, 1630 East Madison Avenue, retail dealer off only, off premises only. These are the only ones we've received so far.
Okay. Can they vote on all this at one time?
Yes, sir, since the list. I mean, since the list has been read out, the answer is yes.
Okay. And what would be your pleasure?
Move to approve.
We got, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All for?
Uh-uh.
Against? Motion passes.
May I make a motion? We adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Yeah, that was at the beginning.
You have to speak. He has a chance at motion speak.
I would like to see what he has to say.